Good evening. It's 6:30 PM on Monday, October the 25th, 2021, and I now call the Wintonwood City School Board of Education meeting to order. In the absence of our board president, as vice president, I will be conducting the board meeting this evening. In keeping with the CDC guidelines, we ask that everyone please wear a mask while they're inside of our school buildings. Let's please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda tonight is the oath of office for a newly appointed board member. Mrs. Kuhn, would you please step forward? And Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And that I will perform faithfully.
And that I will perform faithfully.
The duties of a member of the Board of Education.
The duties of a member, as a member of the Board of Education.
Of the Wintonwood City School District.
Of the Wintonwood City School District.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws.
And in accordance with the laws.
Now in effect, and after three years.
Now, in effect.
After two and a half years.
Here and after two and a half years.
During my continuance.
During my continuance.
Instead of.
Instead of.
Until my successor.
Until my successor.
Is elected and qualified.
Is elected and qualified.
So help me God.
And Mrs. Kuhn, congratulations and welcome back.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is the roll call. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Present.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Present.
Mr. McGowens?
Present.
Mr. Burdy?
Present.
Dr. Johnson?
Present. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is 2.01, the election of a board president. Due to the resignation of our past president, Mrs. Ruggles, as vice president, I now call for nominations for the election of the president to finish the term for this calendar year, 2021. Yes?
I would like to nominate Dr. Viola Johnson as president for the remainder of the year.
I'll second.
It's been nominated and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Seeing that there are no other nominations, I now declare the nomination for the board president closed. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowens?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Mr. Seymour will come forward and declare the oath of office. I, Dr. Viola Johnson?
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of president.
Perform the duties of president.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Wintonwood City School.
Of the Wintonwood City School District.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is the election of the board vice president that will finish the term for this calendar year, 2021. I would like to make a, okay, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Jeff Burkey as vice president for the remainder of the term.
And I'd like to second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I declare the nomination for the board vice president closed. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowens?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote now passes unanimously. Mr. Seymour is going to come forward and do the oath of office. He's gone?
Yeah.
I, Jeff Burdy.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And that I will perform faithfully.
And that I will perform faithfully.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
The duties of vice president.
The duties of vice president.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Wintonwood City School District.
Of the Wintonwood City School District.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
So help me God.
The next item on our agenda is a board recess. Do you need a five-minute recess? Are we good to keep going? We good to keep going? We good to keep going? Okay. We're going to forego the recess. So the next, we will resume now to the 5.01, which is public comments. And the first person up for public comments is Bill Spellman. Mr. Spellman, you can take the podium.
Sorry, I want to set a timer. So I talked last month about the proficiency in Wintonwood's high school. Math, in 2019, we were at 3%. The state is 63%. In reading, in 2019, we were 41%, and the state is 64%. The more important thing is that in 2015 and 2016, we dropped from 75 to under 20 in one year, proficiency. And in the same timeframe for reading, we were just over 80, and we went to under 40. That's an incredible drop. That's six years ago. We were above the state average at the time in proficiency, and in one year, we fell way down. I checked to see when the superintendent was hired, and he was hired in 2013, and a number of the board members were elected to their positions in 2014. This happened under you. I watched the debate the other night, and one of the questions was about transparency. And, Dr. Johnson, your response was, a number of the people, the candidates, were complaining about transparency. Your comment was, "When people ask questions, we try to do our best to get back to them." I pointed out this. I left copies for everybody. I watched on video to see if anybody picked them up, and nobody picked them up until you went offline. I never got a response. So I came back tonight and thought, "Well, I'll say the same thing again. 13% proficiency in math, 41% proficiency in reading, way under the state average. We fell dramatically in 2015 and 16, and nobody did anything." So I'm just speaking up, saying, "I asked then, 'Can we form a task force and to find out what we were doing successfully then, before the scores fell so dramatically?'" So I think we ought to get back to people, like you promised to do in the debate. The other thing that really, I watched the rest of the meeting after I last last time, and this was a page from the treasurer's report, and the ending balance in 63022 is $9.4 million. That's 14.3% of the expenditure for the year. Surely, we can find a couple of resource officers, if they're really needed, in 14... or $9.4 million. And some of the other things that the tax levy, which is going to add $3.2 million, you just, it just seems like, given that report, that there's... I know you need to save for a rainy day, but they ask for 3.2 when you have that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
You mind if I make a comment, please?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So, can you go back to the podium?
Sure.
Yes, sir. All right. So to answer the questions, the task force situation is not a viable answer at this point.
Okay.
But what I am willing to do is have a meeting with you.
Oh.
So I can give you all the facts and figures. Because you're giving quotes about certain things and percentages and scores, but the one thing that you failed to do is to see when the state changed the testing format and the testing formula and what was expected. So I think it's going to be a great opportunity for you to learn some things from us, and we can learn something from you as well. And I can sit down and give you the analysis of the math and reading scores that you quote.
I would love to do that.
Yes, sir.
In fact, that's what I asked for last time, and nobody ever even called me or sent me an email.
Okay. But I will. And we will set it up, and we will have a conversation to talk about the discrepancies.
And if my statistics are wrong, I apologize.
That's okay.
I just pulled them off of Public School Review, Wintonwood's High School profile.
And this is not a debate. This is just a conversation about facts.
Correct.
Okay? So, we will do that.
Dr. Cupaletti?
And I put my phone number on my card.
Yes, sir.
So if you want to give me a call.
We will do that.
My phone number's on there.
For sure.
Go ahead.
This is a very critical time for us. We are requesting an emergency levy, and unfortunately, you have misquoted the amount of money that we're requesting. And we are not asking for resource officers. So you're giving very bad information at a critical time. You can find on the website, on several websites, the levy. Not what you quoted, but what the actual levy is. So anyone who's listening, please understand that you've been given very bad information. Okay?
I appreciate that. That's what I heard in the debate from...
That's not what is written.
Okay. Understood. I apologize for incorrect information, but I heard it in the debate.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Spellman.
Can you see my...
Yes. Yeah. We'll make sure that this gets sent to...
Dr. Johnson.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. You're very welcome. The next person up is Aaron Washington-Chiles.
I have just a handful of questions. So I believe under Ohio state law, when somebody resigns from the board, they have to be, their vacancy has to be filled within 30 days of their resignation. So my first question is, when did Ms. Ruggles resign from the board? Because I believe she wasn't at the last meeting as well, and I think that might have been past the 30-day requirement. So that's question number one. Question number two was, I believe last week, on the 18th, I may have the date wrong, was the date where you guys had the interviews and everything for the candidate to replace her and fill her vacancy. I tried to attend that meeting, so I wanted to know if that was a public meeting, and I believe, based on the calendar, the time and the location was changed from here to the middle school. So I was wondering what went into that change, and if there was a change, could that have been better publicized to the community so people could have attended? Because I think that was a pretty important meeting. And then the last thing I wanted to know was, since we have Ms. Kuhn as the new appointee and the new person who's been elected, I mean, appointed to the board, is there any consideration of publicizing her qualifications to be on the board online so people can have some kind of level of understanding of what went into that decision and her qualifications? All right? And those are my questions.
All right. Thank you very much.
Would you wish for me to speak? I don't want to speak. I'm sure.
You can. I do want to say that Mrs. Ruggles' resignation wasn't until September the 30th. So we were within the 30 days that we were given for that, and the interviews were on October the 18th, and they were republicized on the website, the change in the address. And we did that because it's harder to get into this building than to get over into the middle school building on Waycross. And plus, we could spread out and have more room for us to, you know, work and keep socially distanced.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
We did something in order, just to make sure that there wouldn't be any discrepancies later, where the date of 30 days was very, very relevant.
Yeah.
That's why, if you look, her resignation was posted online.
Yes.
It was posted for everyone to see, and I know that many, many people got it because they responded.
Yeah.
So I don't know, Mr. Scholz, if you didn't receive it or not, but it was posted on our site so that everybody could see the official resignation letter with the date.
And the first thing you see when you go to the Board of Education location, it was right there, you know, the resignation and everything, so... Okay. Mrs. Kuhn, if you'd like to address that, you can.
Sure. Thank you for your question.
We've got a few minutes left on this.
I was previously elected in 2015 to the board, ran my four-year term, left two years ago. When I saw the vacancy come forward, after I've spent my entire life in the district, I grew up here, I'm a graduate of Forest Park High School, my children are graduates, I've been president of the PTA, president of the school, or the music boosters, president of the Wintonwood's Educational Foundation. Those pieces were really important. Whoop, I'm done. But anyways, but I'm very happy to serve the people, but thank you for your question.
That was Mr. Washington-Chiles.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
Did you leave his phone?
And I can't get it to stop, right? There it is. Sorry. That was his three minutes still, so we were good. That's okay. That's okay. We appreciate your coming and making a comment. The next person up is Patricia Bender.
This is difficult to be able to speak with this mask on. So I hope that my, my eyes don't clog up so that I can read. There are several things that I've come for. The last two visits, this is my third, I've asked about the critical race theory issue in the board, and I've not yet to hear anything. I really don't want a private meeting. I think that whatever is being said regards to the grades that are demonstrated through articles, this one being the report cards in the Inquirer, October 18th, and Wintonwood Schools' proficiencies have gone down to 25%. I think that it would be very wise to have transparency and let the people in Green Hills and Forest Park hear what you have to say, instead of privately meeting with us and letting us know. Now, I understand, 2020 was a horrible year for everybody. I can't imagine having to learn online and think the kids really sit in front of a computer. To me, it would just be outrageous. The other area that I was concerned with, one, I heard nothing on critical race theory. You talked about doing a one-call that never happened, and I'm very concerned about that being in the school district. The Ohio Board of Education has repealed its anti-racism resolution, and hopefully, the Wintonwood School District is doing the same. I have really been promoting Wintonwood's, asking people to come to your football games, which I enjoyed tremendously. It was a great deja vu from when I graduated from Green Hills High School, and I loved every minute of it, and so it was a real thrill. And I acknowledged it to the Green Hills people as I was posting in my neighborhood group. I am running for mayor in Green Hills, and I really want to know the transparency of Wintonwood's High School, if we are going to be sending our kids here. The other area that I talked about last time I was here, and that had to do with the 5G. We brought a woman up who went and got certified NYG, or not really in 5G, but in Wi-Fi and EMFs. And there is a schedule of the Wi-Fi and the countries that are stopping Wi-Fi from actually being put in schools until more research is done. I really would like to have some emails, if possible, to forward this information to you. Because the amount of exposure that we're all put under, whether it be cell phones or computers, routers in bedrooms, as well as in schools, I think it's just an overload. Being a health professional, we were very warned about exposure to radiation throughout our whole school career. And many patients even come in and don't want to have x-rays because of the amount of radiation, but yet they carry the cellphone in their pocket, and then their kids sit here and they work on their notepad, and half the people here aren't even listening to me. They're looking at their messages on their cellphone. So as a concerned citizen of Green Hills, I really would like Wintonwood's to address these three areas that I have yet to hear any answers on. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes, please tap the floor.
As it relates to CRT, Wintonwood City Schools will follow the state standards, and the state standards are not, we're not teaching critical race theory. So I just want that to be a definitive right now, so that you know. As it relates to the Wi-Fi, there wasn't a woman that came up. It was our tech director, who's a very, very experienced person. So it wasn't someone just off the street that we just asked to come up.
No, I understand that was, but I'm sure you have got certified. We have her come up to speak.
Yeah. Because we wanted to make sure there was people there with credentials to really answer your question, to make it make sense.
But she didn't talk about 5G at all.
Okay. All right. We can send information out, as I mentioned before, but I think the part that we want to make sure that we are clear on is, we have a lot of theories. There are a lot of theories out there about what 5G does and what it doesn't do, and I don't know if those theories are definitive. And so...
These are theories.
These are theories.
I'd like to email you the information.
That would be very good. I would appreciate it.
This is in many countries on what they're doing with 5G.
Countries. United States being one.
United States being one, and California actually blocked 5Gs from even being in the schools. Resolution to hold 5G passed in Hawaii, Tennessee, New Hampshire, and Connecticut. Restrictions in attendance in near homes, including Calhoun, Ross, Alters, Mill Valley, Malibu, San Diego, California, New Hampshire, and more.
So I just want to know, the state of California is saying no 5G in its schools, the unified district, school district of California, the state of California?
Yes. And I can send this link to you.
I would be thrilled to see it.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Bender. The next person that we have for public comments is Helen Booker.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm up here on the behalf of my sixth-grade grandson. He wanted me to ask you all what is going on with the school buses. He said the school buses have been late picking him up. He said they were late all last week, and he just kind of wants to know what's going to happen. And he gets out of school at 3:30, and he's been getting home at, after 4 o'clock. So he says the bus picks him up, then goes, picks up high school students. I don't know what's going on. He just kind of wants to know why the buses are running late and he's getting home so late. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I will say that generally, whenever the buses are running late or going to run late, there is a one-call that goes out, an email, and the text goes out to all the people, the stakeholders, so... But there is a bus driver shortage across the nation. I mean, not just in Wintonwood City School District, so... And we are always looking for bus drivers and doing things to hire bus drivers, so pass this to Mr. Seymour, please. Is it true that they pick the sixth graders up and then go to high school? Oh, no, I don't know that. We'll have to investigate that. That is something that... That's what they say.
Yeah. I don't want people to get the impression that the bus actually goes to one place and then it goes back to the garage. Every one of these routes are doubled and tripled along the way. So there may be some truth of it, but I appreciate your grandson being so astute about, "Hey, my bus is late, and I want to get to school." So we appreciate that comment coming from him. And we, like Dr. Johnson said, there's a bus shortage all across the country. And if there are people in the audience or people watching on Waycross that says, "I like to drive a bus, I have my CDL," we would be more than happy to get you trained and certified so that we could be more efficient with transportation. I'm not sure if you watch the news, but there are some schools, we have, we've decided not to do it. After my conversation with the board, there are some schools that have closed school because they didn't have enough transportation drivers. That's a big hit. That's a huge hit, to close school for the entire district. So we're very, very cognizant of it and very, very aware that it places a hardship on families, but we have to actually do due diligence to make sure that we are not closing school prematurely because of transportation. So be patient, and as Dr. Johnson mentioned, we sent out a one-call when it's going to be late, and that's just the process that we have to use right now, unfortunately. No excuses, just facts.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate all the comments that do come in. We do our best. Generally, we don't take time to answer, but it was brought to our attention that one month is too late to wait, and as long as we don't run over 45 minutes or an hour during public comments, we can take time to do that. So if there's a response, so I appreciate you. We appreciate you coming and giving us your comment. Okay. The next item on the agenda is 6.01, which is the Wintonwood Teachers Association representative. Do we have a representative from the Wintonwood Teachers Association tonight? No. Okay. All right. Moving to the next, the next item is 6.02, the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, OTC, and she has the floor, Mrs. Ferguson-Wright.
Good evening, Madam President, Board President. Madam, or excuse me, Mr. Vice President, Board Members, Administrative Staff, sisters and brothers that are watching, and community members. Congratulations. Paula, welcome back. We missed you. To the community members that was inquiring about the buses, the bus drivers are under our membership. We have some of the finer bus drivers there are. Please remember, if your student arrives safe, that's the most important thing.
Yes.
To and from. They might be late, but your student is safe. So just work with us. We're doing the best we can. Like they said, there is a shortage across the community, or across the country. That's all we have to say.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you for coming out tonight. The next item on the agenda is 7.01, the approval of minutes as presented. Board, unless you see any necessary changes to the minutes, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
I'll abstain.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowens?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes with a four-to-one abstention. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, which is the treasurer's report for financial statements for September 2021. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes. Summary for the September 30th financials, our year-to-date revenues in the general fund are at $17.6 million. Our month-to-date revenues for the general fund were $3 million, most of which was state foundation support and homestead and rollback. Our year-to-date expenditures thus far are at $12.1 million, and we are currently running approximately $1.5 million under budget, or about 2.8%. Our financial activity in all funds, all funds had a fund balance of $39.6 million. Our financial activity in all funds, all funds had a fund balance of 39.6 million, 22.7 million was in the General Fund, and we still have approximately 8 million remaining in the building, building and classroom facility funds. That's basically a summary of the financials that I submitted to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seymour. With no objections being heard, let's let the financial statements for the month of September 2021 be submitted for audit. And the next item on the agenda is 9.01, which is the Treasurer's Recommendation of Investments for September 2021. Mr. Seymour, back to you.
Yes, for the month of September, we have approximately 39.6 million invested. We earned approximately $8,000 on interest. Mostly of that interest went to the General Fund at this time. Our building fund only receives approximately $1,800. Our interest rate right now on all cash, which is not invested in any portfolio, is running at two tenths of percent, so it's not a good time to have a lot of liquid cash in the bank, but it's the economy.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.02, the Transfer of Funds from the General Fund to the Athletic Fund. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
As you approved in the appropriations last month, we do need to transfer funds from the General Fund to our Athletic Fund. Our Athletic Fund has really suffered dramatically over the last two years in gate receipts, which is, gate receipts are the main source to keep the athletic program running. The gate receipts are back up for this year, but we do need to transfer funds in order to keep the program running and to cover the costs of the program. Right now, Mr. Smith is still trying to provide for the athletic program through the General Fund, only for uniforms or major expenditures, but we're still asking the athletic program to cover all their necessary supplies, their officials, their training supplies, and the incidentals that go along with, like the gate takers and the actual games. But right now, they still are not to a point where they could, where they could cover... Thank you, I love church bells.
I'm so sorry. I thought I turned it off.
They're still not to the point where they could cover the major purchases for equipment and things like that.
Yeah, and the other, good point, Mr. Seymour, the other thing I want the public to know is, last year was the first year that we were actually in a league playing local teams. In the past, we played teams in Canada, Missouri, and when you play those teams, you can't take a yellow bus, so the revenue stream had to be extremely low. So, I want people to understand that it wasn't just about mismanagement of funds, it was about who we were playing and where the kids are traveling in order to be able to compete the way that they needed to. So this is our second year in the league, we are still playing teams all out in different counties, but it is absolutely much better than it was before.
So, basically with this transfer, we can still say that the athletic program is covering the cost of the program.
Absolutely.
Not necessarily the equipment or needed to run the program at this time. It will take a while for the athletic program to recover from that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seymour and Mr. Smith. Board, a motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of $40,000 from the General Fund 001 to the Athletic Fund 300.
It's been motioned, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been motioned and seconded, are there any questions for discussion?
I do have one question, does that cover the transportation cost as well, or is that under a different, okay.
It's a different one.
Okay, very good.
Okay, any other questions?
Dr. Johnson, there was a, there was a question from the public, someone asked a question, I think Dr. Culetti said 300, and they needed some clarification of what that meant.
Oh, it's line item 300.
It's just a fun number.
It's a fun number. Like each one of our, each one of the line items for the process has a number, and it's transferring from the General Fund, which is line item 001, to the Athletic Fund, which is line item 300.
Okay.
Say that again?
How much funds?
Oh, it was 40,000. Everybody clear? Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.03, which is the Voucher Joiner Resolution. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
In this resolution, it's coming from Adequacy and Adequacy, which the Board of Education has always been a member of the Ohio Adequacy and Adequacy Program, which is a, school districts join together to represent state funding. Whenever there's legislation proposed to change state funding or to redirect state funding, adequacy and adequacy funds are used to help state position for public schools. You typically have been a member of this for as long as I've been here, which is basically 50 cents per student. For, right now, there's a big push in the state of Ohio for vouchers. The Adequacy and Adequacy Group is trying to defend vouchers and not expand vouchers. The total expansion of vouchers could even mean that a child that never attended Winton Woods Schools and has always went to a private school would all of a sudden get a voucher to attend that school. It's not because they chose to go to a different school due to our performance, or that they're asking for open enrollment request or anything, the parent would simply get a voucher. And the state of Ohio districts that are most impacted by this expanded voucher program are joining together, that's why it's called the joiner, they're joining together to try and defend and maintain and not expand the vouchers. The only other thing I would like to point out is that the added request of $1.50 per student would be less than the cost of one voucher going out of our funds. So, right now, a high school voucher is running around 6,250 and an elementary voucher around 5,500. In the voucher program, those are proposed to go up, but nothing has been determined to be valued. And as you know, when you have a voucher and those funds flow away from the district, we don't get 6,000 from the state per student, so actually, real estate taxes that our people are paying are helping to support that voucher program to flow to private and religious schools. So that's why most of the public school systems, which will be most impacted by an expanded voucher system, are joining together through our Adequacy and Adequacy Program to try and stand up for not expanding the vouchers. And I'm sure Mr. Smith has more to add, but that's basically, the resolution is giving me permission from the board to join this expanded membership for the voucher program.
Yeah, in addition to that, the voucher that the student would receive is not just for the years, for the lifetime of the student being in a K-12 institution. So, that's what we need to remember.
Yeah. Just for public knowledge, I'm going to go ahead and read this, Voucher Joiner Resolution.
Okay.
Whereas the dedication of funds from the school district by the Ohio Department of Education and payment of those funds to private schools' educational choice voucher funds diminishes the amount of funding and the level of education opportunity for the education of the pupils in the district, and whereas, the dedication of school voucher funds from the school district further reduces the funding available to support the additional needs of district minority pupils, pupils in poverty, and pupils with disabilities, and whereas, the dedication of school voucher funds from the school district can result in involuntary transfer of district local tax revenue approved by the voters of the district for the support of the district's operating expenses to provide religious schools for the support of those school programs in violation of the rights of the district taxpayers, and whereas, the dedication of school voucher funds from the school district increases reliance on local tax revenue and maintains school operations in violation of the Ohio Constitution and clear directives of the Ohio Supreme Court. Section 1, now therefore, the Board of Education finds and determines that the deduction of school voucher funds from the school district is harmful to the district, its pupils, taxpayers, voters, and staff. Section 2, the Board of Education authorizes, directs the school district's joiner of the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy for School Funding Coalition, and directs the district treasurer to pay coalition dues as set forth in Section 3. And Section 3, the coalition dues for 2021, 2022 school year are the sum of $2 per pupil enrollment listed on most recent report card, except that the ESC boards and education dues shall be the sum of 20 cents per pupil ADM as the latest report card, or $3,000, whichever is less. Dues shall be allocated by the coalition as follows, 1, 50 cent per pupil shall initially allow, allocated to the payment of the coalition operating expense, and 2, $1.50 per pupil shall be allocated to the support of the coalition's effort in opposition of the deduction of school vouchers from the funds and other school districts. Coalition dues are payable upon passage of this resolution. So, Board, I will entertain a motion at this time. Yes?
Madam President, in several places, you use the word, you didn't use the word deduction.
Well, can we get a motion and then we can discuss it?
Oh, yes ma'am.
Yes.
So, I'd like to make a motion to...
Okay.
Approve this.
Okay, and then we'll discuss it, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second.
Okay, so, now, there are questions for discussion, go ahead.
Yes, at the, in the last paragraph, you used the word deduction correctly.
Right, where it says, "to support the coalition's effort in opposition to the deduction of school voucher."
Yeah, that's correct.
Mm-hmm.
But I thought I heard, and I don't know, might be different, in the first item, whereas the deduction of funds?
Yes.
Did you use the word?
Deduction, I thought I did.
I think you said dedication, but it...
Did I say dedication?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant to say deduction.
So, wherever, wherever you said dedication.
Did I say dedication more than once?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, my gosh, okay, I'm so sorry.
I would like you to clarify that you made...
It just means she's a dedicated board member.
I'm dedicated to reading this, I read what I want to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Culetti. He is referring to the first, second, and third, and fourth, as I started, whereas the deduction of funds, right, is that what you're saying? I said dedication?
Yep.
The funds are dedicated to go there.
Okay, whereas the deduction of school vouchers, whereas the deduction of school vouchers, where the deduction of school vouchers.
And Section 1 also.
And Section 1 of the, whereas the deduction.
Yes.
I said dedication that many times.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, my God, you should have stopped me.
I didn't want to interrupt you.
I'm so sorry. Okay, I do apologize, I, you know, I'm reading through fog glasses, as Mrs. Bender said, so, okay, I do apologize for that. Okay, we have the motion and it's been seconded. If there's no more discussion at this time, Mr. Seymour, well, before I say that, I will say that you can find this resolution, since I did misread it, on the website, okay, under the board docs, so you should be able to find it. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.04, which is the Resolution Requesting Authority to File a Modified Tax Budget for 2022-2023 Fiscal Year. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
It really won't be necessary for you to read this one, but...
Okay, yeah.
Basically, what I'm requiring, asking the board is to give me permission to file the modified tax budget as prescribed by the Hamilton County Auditor, and in that, instead of filing the antiquated form that they used to use, we'll be able to use our five-year forecast. But as you know, we haven't currently yet adopted our five-year forecast because we're trying to wait for the most latest information we'll have. All indications are that the five year, I'll do the five-year forecast in November with no additional more information because it's been pushed back to December now. So, I'll be bringing the five-year forecast to the regular November meeting, but right now, I was just asking the board's permission to file with the Hamilton County Auditor to use the modified, five-year forecast as our modified budget for the 22-23 budget. This is the 22-23 year budget.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution Requesting Authority from the Hamilton County Budget Commission to file a modified tax budget for the 2022-2023 fiscal year as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded, are there any questions for discussion?
Yeah, I do have one question.
Okay, please, go ahead.
So, Mr. Seymour, once we get the information back from the state, we can go back and change the meeting.
No, you're giving me permission to actually use that five-year forecast, and I'll bring it to you for submission at, actually, you did not run for the board, so it will be brought back to the board in January for the adoption of the budget. So...
Yes. Okay, any other questions?
You're going to miss it.
Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Dr. Burdy? I'm sorry, Mr. Burdy.
I was promoting.
I just gave you a promotion.
Aye.
And Dr. Johnson.
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. The next item on the agenda is 10.01, which is the Reports of the Superintendent. Mr. Smith, you have the floor, school reports.
Yes, Dr. Johnson, these are, these are, there are other reports that you'll find on the website, but these are ones that would not have made it to the site based on their particular circumstances. So there is a tailgating experience for the entire community on October 29th, and that will be the first playoff game. We are secure, we secured a playoff game, so we're excited about that. I could have been very, very premature and put a playoff game in the beginning of the school year, but I didn't want to do that because we may not have made it. And the game starts at 7 o'clock, but the tailgating experience starts at 5 o'clock, bringing all the community together to kind of wish the kids good luck in their first experience. There is no school for students on Thursday, November 4th, and Friday, November 5th, so that our teachers can go through the rigorous training with their professional development through teaching and learning, so I wanted the parents to know that students will be away on the 4th and 5th. The Warrior Community Pantry will continue to run, we'll send out dates because there are some parents out there who are very, very needy, and they need that Warrior Pantry to still be very, very efficient. And here's the one where there will be some students that will be very, very excited, and others may not be as excited. Report card distribution is October 29th, so the report cards will be coming out, regardless if you want it yours or not, it will be there. So if parents, if someone's saying, hey, they told me I'm not getting mine until October 1st, parents don't believe it. But, yes, yes, I think that sometimes the report card stops kids from going out for trick-or-treating, something happens where they don't get that opportunity. Okay, and due to the Thanksgiving break, the board meeting will take place on November 22nd, and I just wanted to give you guys some of the highlights of some of the things, but these are particulars that you would not have seen on the calendar that are relevant based on time and issues.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The next item on the agenda is 10.02, which is the First Reads of the New and Revised Board Policies. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, before I go on, I'd like to ask a question to Mr. McGowan. Sir, were you happy when the report cards came out when you were a child?
My particular report card?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Okay, alright, that's what I thought, that's what I thought, yes, sir.
Always.
Okay. So the first policy that, these are the first reads, and so, the board, you will be expected to vote on these policies on November 22nd, alright? So you have one month to get them into your system. Policy number one is 1617, Administration and Weapons. Policy 0169.1, Public Participation at Board Meetings, pay very, very close to public participation at board meetings because some of the processes have changed along the way. Policy 1530, Administration Evaluation of Principals and Other Administrators. Policy 2271, College Credit Plus Program, for parents out there who are interested in College Credit Plus. Policy 31, 3217, Professional Staff and Weapons. Policy 4217, Classified Staff and Weapons. Policy 5111, Students Eligibility of Residents and Non-Resident Students, and finally, Policy 52, 5111.02, Students Educational Opportunity for Military Children. So these are first reads, and they will be back on November 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. As he has stated, there are eight policies that we're going to look at and be ready to vote on for our next regular board meeting. The next item on the agenda is 10.03, which is the Facilities Update. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, if you would turn a little bit to your left or right and to the monitor in the back, this is the South Campus, and they have just put in their little mini amphitheater. There were students that were very, very excited when they saw me standing there, they were excited, they gave me hugs and kisses and said, thank you for putting in the swimming pool, but it is not a pool, it is an amphitheater. So, but, but, when you look at it, the amphitheater, when you get a chance to visit, it is, it is, it was done in a certain level, in a... is, it was done in a certain level and a certain pitch based on the architects that it will create an acoustic sound so that you will not have to use a mic out in the amphitheater, very, very ingenious, yes.
Oh, nice.
The next one is, that's another look at it, and it is handicap accessible, so if anybody has questions about it, there you are. Go back one, Ms. Hobbs. There's a garage door that actually is adjacent to it, and it leads right into the gymnasium, so you could actually have an inside-outside activity going on at the same time, absolutely great for children and outside play. The landscaping has been completed, some trees will be planted very, very shortly, but this is the north campus, and it's gonna, it's just giving you some of the idea of how this campus is gonna be expanded along the way. So, over to the left, you will see the middle school section, and one of the things that parents wanted us to do from the beginning when these schools were being designed, make sure there was a separate entrance for middle schoolers and high schoolers, so those two groups are very, very separate, their time of getting out of school is very, very separate, they have their own parking, they have their own distributed dining, they have their own learning stairs, so it's a very separate issue. But, for students who are gifted and talented, they also have the opportunity that if parents want them to take higher-level courses, they could just go through a set of double doors, and they're already involved in higher-level courses without leaving to go to another campus. So, if you look to the right, the concrete area, that's where the marching band will march straight to the stadium for another victory, hopefully against Turpin on Friday night. That's it. So, those are the updates, and so you guys know that it's coming along well before what we had before, and we're really, really excited about everything that SHP and Megan Construction has done to make this a very beautiful campus.
It's, it's, thank you, Mr. Smith, it's really amazing to watch it unfold, you know, with the landscape, because every time you drive by, it's a little bit different, and since I don't live in Green Hills, I have to make my way down there, but it is absolutely amazing from, you know, like, when the building was going up and watching, you know, the progress, so it's exciting to have two new campuses, and it's exciting that the learning that is going on in those two, you know, in those two buildings, so.
Absolutely.
I'm excited about it, and I hope that our community is as well. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh one, which is the superintendent's recommendation for personnel schedules. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Ms. Wilson. I'm having the HR director come up and just give a quick overview.
Good evening.
And before you, you have schedules A, B, C, D, and E. A is resignations. B is certificated staff. We do have a new physician and a new person who's here this evening, Rita Bushelman, from Hamilton County. She's a former teacher in our syst, or, I'm sorry, a former occupational therapist from our system, who was promoted and left and went to Hamilton County, and she's now coming back to support the Early Childhood Center. So, Ms. Bushelman, do you wanna?
Come see if you were.
I'm gonna say anything? Would you like to say anything? Is that okay?
I would just like to say hello, and, and I sincerely thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to serving the community and helping these young children love learning from day one, so thank you.
Yes, the superintendent of Hamilton County, Mr. Hilliker, he's been calling me, I have not answered his call because I know what he wants, and I'll catch him in the spring.
And what's nice about Ms. Bushelman is she was actually one of Mrs. Bray's teacher, staff members, and she mentored her, and she just developed a wonderful reputation in the district, and then so when Liz Styles, our preschool principal, had an opportunity, she was really excited to be able to offer her the opportunity, so I hope you'll support her.
So, Ms. Wilson, we know that she has the right spirit because she brought family members with her, so.
Oh, yeah.
Who did you bring with you tonight?
I brought my support system. I brought my mother.
Hi, Mom.
My son, Tyler. My sister, Katie, and my nephew, Amari, who is two, and currently stuck in the house to have a movement.
I see Bishop Cousins in the audience, and he can tell you that when you bring your mother with you, that means, that's really great.
Yeah.
There's, that's a good sign right there. Am I right, sir?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Carry on.
We also have on schedule C, which is our supplement, our support staff appointments, some key pieces there. You'll see that we've got some internal veterans who are being promoted. So, Elaine Fuller, who's been with the district, I think, twenty-two years, and Lisa Barclay, who's been with the district twenty-four years, they're both being promoted to different positions. Elaine will be joining the EMAs department, and Lisa Barclay will be supporting the Treasurers' Department. So, those are kind of the highlights of, that's those schedules. And then, we are also asking the board to support the hiring of an assistant transportation director, supervisor, I'm sorry, and that's Barb Binaco. She has experience as a router in another district, over five years of experience, so that'll come in handy. She also, coincidentally, we had our first, last month, we had our first drawing for perfect attendance down at the Transportation Department, and she won. It was just a coincidence, and then she showed up at the interview and nailed it, she did a great job in the interview, so we're hoping that she will help enhance our efficiency down there.
Thank you.
And then, other than that, the rest of the schedules are pretty routine and straightforward, those are some of the highlights.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Board, a motion is in order to approve the personnel schedules A, B, C, D, and E.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
I'll second that motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote? Thank you, Mrs.
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh two, which is the substitute salary schedule. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
So, Dr. Johnson, as you mentioned, and your assessment is accurate, there is a shortage of bus drivers all over the country. There is also a shortage of substitute teachers all over the country, and they are working diligently with the House, and it's in legislation now to increase the opportunity for people to be substitute teachers in school, but we have made the decision to approve the substitute salary schedule effective November 1st as presented with the recommendation of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the substitute salary schedule effective November 1st, 2021, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
I do have one question. The last item on the list, long-term substitute teacher, and it says bachelor zero.
After thirty days in the same position, so let's say we have a long-term commitment, returning, or something like that, then a teacher that earns in that position thirty consecutive days advances to the equivalent of our bachelor spec zero, and they would earn that amount until the regular bachelor teacher returns.
Okay, so that is a rate that is set, and they will get that rate, whatever that is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But they're essentially then at that point probably less than planning, taking over the class. I oppose you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, I just didn't, I didn't, it didn't register what it might be.
The other part, Dr. Cupoletti, as Ms. Wilson mentioned, it's thirty consecutive days. So, if the person were to change positions after twenty days, the thirty days start all over again. So, it has to be thirty consecutive days in the same position.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Seymour, if there are no more discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh three, which is the classified administrative salary schedule. Mr. Smith, back to you.
Yes, Dr. Johnson, the recommendation is to approve the classified administrative salary schedule effective November 1st, 2021, as presented.
Thank you. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the classified administration salary schedule effective November 1st, 2021, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh four, which is the supplemental salaries for, salary schedule academic. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, the recommendation is to approve the supplemental salary schedule for academics exclusively in the Teaching and Learning Department effective August 1st, 2021, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the supplemental salary schedule, academic, Teaching and Learning Department, effective August 1st, 2021, as presented.
I'll second that motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
I do have a question set effective August 1st, so is it retro, would we be retroactive? Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh five, which is the job description for the assistant to the treasurer payroll. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, the recommendation is to approve the assistant to the treasurer payroll job description as presented, and I want to caution the board, and the wording is very, very intentional, it is not the assistant treasurer, it's assistant to the treasurer.
So noted. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the assistant to the treasurer payroll job description as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh six, which is the job description for the lead food service worker. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board, I don't know if this actually made it to your docs on time, so, but Ms. Wilson wants to come up, and she can give you an overview so you can have a clear description of the necessity.
Thank you.
I was just gonna crack a joke earlier about the assistant to the treasurer. Does anyone watch The Office? Oh, okay, so you get it, okay. Okay, so this job description, as you know, our food service supervisor, Mark Doctor, has been working diligently to improve the service within his department, and he is just, he has really transformed that department. So, part of what he's done is, as we've moved to campuses, as opposed to individual schools, he's revamped the, he's asked us to revamp the job description to reflect more of what they're actually doing now that they're campus-wide. So, the parts in red just kind of reflect what he, how he described the new role and some of the qualifications that he's looking for. The key piece being that he wants the serve safe level-two certification to be required, and also to have the food handler's card and other state and federal certifications as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Board, a motion would be in order.
Dr. Johnson, before your motion.
Yes, please.
I'm not sure if you guys remember last month where the gentleman came up and made reference to education is the mission and not nutrition is the mission. Well, I would have to clarify, we have many missions, and nutrition is definitely one of the missions in order to make sure kids are effective in the classroom. So, we will not discount the nutrition is the mission, we will not take that off of the buses, we will not change the process, but again, we have many missions, and nutrition and education go hand in hand.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Smith. Agreed. Yes, you ready to make a motion, and then we can discuss it?
Sorry, Dr. Johnson, I was just, I've been, I've been itching to say that for like a month.
I absolutely agree.
I'll make a motion
Yes.
to approve the job description for lead food service worker as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? I do like that you did clarify that, Mr. Smith, thank you very much.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Is food service centralized such that there would only be one such person?
No, there, there will be three lead food service persons, one at the Early Childhood Center, one at the north campus, and one at the south campus.
Thank you.
And that's a great question, Dr. Cupoletti, because they're trying to serve close to eighteen hundred students per campus, and it would be hard to maneuver around.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Mrs. Wilson.
Okay, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the eleven point oh seven, which is the resolution for American Education Week for November the 15th through the 19th, 2021. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, Mr. McGowan has been itching to read one of these proclamations, and so, Mr. McGowan, you're up for American Education Week proclamation, November 15th to the 19th, sir.
Absolutely. Whereas, American Education Week was first observed in December 1921 as an opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of our public schools and to acknowledge the importance of community support for public education, and whereas teachers, administrators, education professionals, and educational support staff, working at the local, regional, or state levels, serve our children and communities with care and professionalism, and whereas the strength, vitality, and freedom of our nation depends on citizens who are dedicated to the education of the next generation through the common school, which welcomes all children and strives to educate them to their highest potential, and whereas partnerships among public schools and their communities help build the support for public education that will sustain this vital institution through its many challenges in educating our children, and whereas the Winton Woods City School District Board of Education will ensure a quality education for all children, that will provide them with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values, values of freedom, civility, and equality, be it therefore resolved that on this date, October 25th, 2021, that American Education Week shall be a time to focus attention on the importance of our public schools, its students, and its staff. The Winton Woods City School District Board of Education hereby proclaims November 15th through 19th, 2021, as the American Education Week.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Board, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I'd like to approve the resolution to, for American Education Week, November fifteenth through the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a comment on the third whereas that Mr. McGowan read.
Okay.
There's a very important part of this that I think the public needs to understand, that Winton Woods has high standards, and we hold teachers and students accountable, but the most important part says, "which welcomes all children and strives to educate them to their highest potential." In some districts, the word would be "some," not "all."
Thank you, Mr. Smith. You're bringing us back to that. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh eight, which is the resolution for International Education Week, November the fifteenth through the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
So when I was a teacher, I would call on students who were looking at me because that means they wanted to answer something, so, Dr. Cupaletti, you're up. Well, thank you, sir.
Whereas, the week of November fifteenth through nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, is International Education Week, and whereas we as a nation are charged with broadening our focus and becoming engaged in building international relationships, and whereas we should expand our efforts to learn from other countries about techniques and practices that will help us improve our own system of education, and whereas we should provide leadership in educational issues in appropriate international forums and collaboratively work on initiatives of common benefits, and whereas it is appropriate to educate and encourage students to learn other languages, cultures, and challenges outside of our nation's borders. Therefore, be it resolved that the Winton Woods City School Board of Education formally promotes and supports international awareness and the importance of teaching our students international education skills adopted this day of October, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, Dr. Cupaletti. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution, the International Education Week, November fifteenth through the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
Dr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
The Winton Woods is the epitome of this particular resolution, I believe. Having thirty-two languages spoken in the district, we're the most diverse district in the state of Ohio, and I want people to know that that's who we are, and we're very, very proud of it, and we encourage other languages and other people from other cultures to come and be part of our system every day. If you ever walk through the gallery of Main Street, you will see thirty-two flags adorned on the ceiling because we represent, it represents every kid in our district that comes from another country.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So noted. So those of you that didn't know why those flags flew, but that's the reason why. So thank you very much. Any other questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, and that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh nine, which is the second read of the new and revised board policies. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President. The recommendation is to approve the second read, new and revised board policies as presented. Sixty-one forty-six finances post issuance of compliance for tax exempt and tax advantaged obligations. Sixty-one fourteen finances as well, cost principal spending, federal funds. Sixty-one forty-four investments. Sixty-two twenty, budget preparation. Sixty-three twenty-five, federal grants and funds. Sixty-six hundred, deposit of public funds, cash collection points. Seventy-four fifty, property inventory. Seventy-four fifty-five, accounting system for capital assets, and finally seventy-four fifty, forty point zero two, web accessibility content apps and services, and these are all, these are, they're three on property, and there were five on finance.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, there are a total of nine new and revised policies, and I will entertain a motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the second read, new and revised board policies as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
I did have a question on the policy seventy-four fifty-five, talking about property, the accounting system for assets, capital assets, and it has marked out land. It does kind of talk about that, so I wasn't sure why land was omitted or taken off. It talked about buildings, and it did consolidate some of the building improvements and so forth. I just wondered about land, and perhaps that had been brought up previously since I might not have had the opportunity to.
Yeah, I think there are two, there are two points we found out through some of our assessments through land surveys that, in many cases, the land is more valuable with the building demolished. So this may have something to do with that particular process. You know, when we go out and do surveys and they give you, this is the value of this particular property, where we went to visit, what was the area that we went to visit?
What school was that?
We demolished it.
It's on Hanover, I can't remember the name.
Yes, Force View. Force View is worth much more demolished than it is standing.
So is that calculated separately?
Yes.
The capital?
And the other point, just for a point of discussion, is that it costs so much for the school district to keep up the property of a building that's just sitting there, you know, for security purposes and taking care of the land, so, yeah.
Approximately seventy thousand dollars a year, Dr. Johnson, just to keep the building open, I mean, and not even being used.
Right, yeah. Mr. Dr. Cupaletti, did you have a statement you'd like to make?
Also insurance and liability
Yes.
in case something goes wrong.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
No, I was just thinking future with the public, with the use of the properties from the former schools and how that works. So that's sort of my question about, I recognize it's more, you know, has more value, and how the school district assesses that value once the building's demolished.
It's a, it's a, it's an appraiser that comes out and gives us the fair market value of what the land is worth.
Okay.
Mr. Seymour, anything?
Once all the buildings are demolished, once the new buildings have been turned over to us, an industrial appraisal company comes in, and these policies, a lot of them are catered towards general accepted accounting principles for reporting through our comprehensive annual financial report, and that's why you saw fix scratched and capital put in. Gia, the Government Financial Association is trying to do away with fixed assets and calling them capital assets,
Very good.
which is what they've all been alluding to, that not always is a building an asset if it's no good sitting on land.
Right.
So they're changing a lot of the policies to come in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles.
Sure.
And then the other thing is, we're excited that the OFCC is co-funding the demolition, so it doesn't have to be a total cost to the district, but that, if you don't do it within this window, your opportunity is gone.
No, that's, that's good. I know that the community's interested in what we're gonna do with that property, and from a school board monetary, we want to get the most out of that asset for our community and for our students, so I was just curious about the land piece.
Yes.
But thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kuhn.
It's just that the land is going to be worth more with the building gone.
Right.
And since the state's co-funding it, that's why Mr. Smith is recommending demolition.
No, I totally understand that. That's great. I think that our, our community, that's an important fact that we want to bring out, that we're very wise and shrewd with the calculation on removing the building at little or no cost to our community, and that we're aware of the value of that land and how we can capitalize on it. So that's, that's sort of why I wanted to kind of touch on that a little bit.
Good. Thank you very much. There's no other questions or discussion? Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Cupaletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is twelve point oh one, which is the Board of Education report and the legislative report. Mr. Smith, do you have anything to share with us on the legislative end?
On the legislative end, yes, ma'am, I do. The Ohio Republicans reveal a plan to give every K-12 kid a school voucher, which is House Bill two ninety, so stay tuned. Congress has plans for universal pre-K, but this is the most exciting part of this whole pre-K endeavor. Under the full three-point-five-trillion-dollar plan, Congress will allocate four point, four-hundred-and-fifty billion for universal pre-K as well as childcare entitlements. The proposal would create a new partnership between federal, state, and local governments to offer free preschool for all three- and four-year-olds. If that passes, that would be incredible. And then, this is the one that I was hesitant to, to report, but it's, it's part of what happened. So this one is the devious licks asked students via TikTok to do some real devious things in the school, and so we've met with our students, and they understood the importance of education, and I have to read this part. Many educators have taken to social media to discourage the challenges and beg TikTok to take action. TikTok has previously told USA Today, "It was removing content related to devious licks, including the hashtag, I won't read it, and redirecting hashtags and search, research results to our community guidelines to discourage such behavior. TikTok users, however, have begun using alternative hashtags to get around the ban." And then, this is the last one, which is really exciting to many, for many of our students. Ohio vax to school to award two million dollars in scholarships. Beginning Monday, October fourth, Ohioans, Ohioans aged twelve to twenty-five can enter online or by phone to win one of one-hundred-and-fifty, one of one-hundred-and-fifty-ten-thousand-dollar scholarships, or one of five one-hundred-thousand-dollar grand prize scholarships. The scholarships awarded in Ohio five-twenty-nine college advantage plans can be used at the Ohio College, University, and Technical Trade School or career program of the winner's choice. The Ohio Department of Health is using a portion of its coronavirus relief funds to fund this initiative, public outreach campaign and initiative. So there's an opportunity.
Very good. Thank you so much. That's very informative. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is twelve point oh two, which is the Great Oaks Career Technical Center report. Mr. Burdy, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Just I'd send an email out, and I won't, I won't go over everything that's in there, but just to recognize some of the Winton Woods students at, at Great Oaks. There were three that received the Scarlet, this is Scarlet Oaks students received the Scarlet Citizenship Weekly Award, which was Marcus Johnson in dental assisting, Chantel Price in the Scarlet Oaks Cosmetology Program, and Jemaya Franklin is in the Scarlet Oaks Veterinary Assisting Program, and then we had one other student, Eric Knowles, who's in the Scarlet Oaks Construction Program, who received a job placement with Promaster Home Repair, so, good news.
That is good.
And that'll complete my report.
Thank you. That's exciting. That's exciting to see that our students are progressing so well at the Oaks. The next item on the agenda is thirteen point oh one, which is board motions and recommendations, and I'm not aware of any board motions or recommendations that we have at this time, so, Mr. Seymour, Mr. Smith, okay, all right, thank you very much. Then we'll just move on to the next item on the agenda, which is fourteen point oh one, which is comments from the Board of Education Superintendent and Treasurer. Mrs. Kuhn is our newly, you know, instated board member. I'll give you the pleasure of going first.
Thank you. I want to extend my appreciation for this opportunity to continue to serve our community, our students. It's been a lifelong mission of mine. I've done this in various capacities throughout my life. Education, public education in particular, is a core tenet of the United States. It's what makes the United States great. It elevates those from various backgrounds, from the many backgrounds, to move on and to be successful in life. And success has many looks. It looks, there's all kinds of needs across the country for people to be very successful, whether it's to go into higher education, to do skilled trades, but our goal is to provide that foundation from our community. It's our partnership. It's what we've, have that contract as a community. It's what forged the way for me, and for, I will say, all of the people up here and probably in the audience, that someone supported you that you did not know, who was much older. They, we kind of built ourselves on their shoulders. That's what life's about. It's a way of giving back, at least from my vantage point. I appreciated the comment from the young man. Thank you very much about some of those qualifications, but I think we're all qualified to be members of our community and to serve and work for our schools. So that's really, really the message, that we're all partners. We need the community to be engaged, and we do need, back to the vouchers, to keep that funding locally. I want my tax dollars to stay here. I don't want it to go somewhere else, and I would hope my neighbors would share that as well. So again, thank you for the privilege. It's an honor, and I had previously served, and people wonder, why did I want to come back? It's because that's, that's important to me. It's, it's part of who I am. So thank you very much again for that opportunity, and thank you, my board, my colleagues. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Kuhn. Next, Dr. Cupaletti?
Well, you will see why I so highly value my new colleague, Ms. Kuhn. She has just explained to you her values, which match my values, and her skills and contributions are really outstanding, so it's really my pleasure to see her on the board, and I thank you so very much for agreeing to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cupaletti. Mr. Burdy?
I'll just say, welcome back, Paula. Glad to have you here. And to touch on a couple of other things that were talked about tonight, and I just, even something like the move of forty thousand dollars from the general fund to the athletic fund. We do take that type of stuff seriously. I mean, we look at the athletic programs that are in this school district as a way for students to achieve higher things than we could do without the athletic programs. I'll just, Mayan Williams, running back at Ohio State, you know, came from, from the Winton Woods School District. There are other people out there that have done that, and it's provided an opportunity for them to get an education, I think, you know, that they may not have been able to get in a, in a different setting. So, so we do take those conversations very seriously, and we try to look at the whole picture, not just the treasures, you know, how much money is it gonna cost, you know, what are the benefits to do, to doing stuff like that? So we do think there are benefits to that. I, I know that those proficiency scores that were in the newspaper, I was looking at those myself. I would ask that anybody that looks at those scores, go on the Ohio Department of Education website, look at the details from school districts that are highest performing, see what the makeup of the school district is from a economically disadvantaged standpoint, from a student with disability standpoint, from English language learners' as, you know, standpoint as a percentage of their, of their population of students that they're, they're teaching. I think that Mr. Smith has thrown out, we don't make excuses, you know, the idea is that we're, we're trying to give every child in this school district the best opportunity in an education for them to perform at their highest level as we possibly can, and that, that's what, that's what everybody, that's what I see from teachers, administrators, and everybody else, even the food service department, and Mr. Doctor, and nutrition is the mission. You know, service to this community is incredibly important to everybody that's here right now, and with that, I will stop. Thank you.
Good. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Mr. McGowan?
Couple of things. One, I, I really appreciate the increased attendance that we've seen over the last couple meetings. I think it's extremely important for us to understand what the community wants, you know, how they feel, and holding us accountable for what we do up here. So I appreciate the increased attendance that we've had. Secondly, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Paula Kuhn to the board. I look forward to working with you. I know the people that we looked at, there were a lot of good candidates, and you came right on top, and I look forward to working with you over the last few months of my term. And always, I want to thank the teachers, the staff, the administrators, for the excellent job that they do every day, you know, that's the most important thing, educating these children, and those are the people that are really on the front line. So every time, I want to thank the teachers, the staff, the administrators, like I said, for the great job that they do, and being a sports guy, as you guys know, last but definitely, definitely not least, I look forward to seeing everybody at the playoff game on Friday. I don't think we should ever take it for granted what a great team we have, and being able to host a playoff game is huge. You don't get to do that unless you You don't get to do that unless you have a really, really good team. So, look forward to seeing everybody on Friday, rain stay away, and I, go Warriors.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Mr. Seymour?
Welcome back, Paula.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, Mr. Birdy mentioned about students participating in activities. I'm actually proud to say that we have 16 young men that are playing Division I football on full scholarships, so you total that dollar up because those scholarship dollars come up to, close to $90,000 per kid, and you don't have it without having the right GPA and the right ACT score. So, I know that there are some challenging circumstances out there, but our students are making it, and they're graduating from college, and so those are attributes that I'd like to say kudos to the teachers and to all the administrators that make that happen.
Thank you. Is that it?
I'm sorry, one more thing, and you, and Mr. Smith made me think about it. As a high school coach myself, that's been around sports for a long time, you guys making the change to make the minimum GPA for our athletes to be 2.5, I cannot emphasize how important that has been. There are a lot of kids that get looks, that they want to get scholarships, but they don't have the grades.
Right, sure.
And, you know, I know, I think you could have all the way down to a 1.9 and still be eligible throughout the state, which is just.
1.0.
It's a 1.0.
1.0.
It's even scarier.
Yeah.
But you guys making the decision to say they had to be at least a 2.5 makes it a lot easier for the coaches that I talk to from the school I'm at, because the first question they ask was the GPA, what is the test score?
Absolutely.
And you guys have made it a lot easier for these kids to get those scholarships throughout the country because of that. So, I want to thank you, the board, when you guys made that decision, that was huge. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. McGowan. That's really true, and we couldn't do it overnight, and when we made the decision to do it, there were a lot of people who said, don't do it, you're going to get rid of these kids, they're not going to be able to, to sustain or whatever, but.
No, Doc, no, 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 no. They said, don't do it, Superintendent, you're going to get fired. That's what they said.
They did say that too. And I said, no, he's not, because I'm, I'm on board with it. You know, as an academic, I was on board with raising it, and my son was an athlete at the time, and I wasn't going to let him play if he got below a 2.5, because it was just like, you know what, I don't care how good you are, they're just using kids, you know, that, that go to school, and they get the, they get to play, and the school gets the recognition and the accolades, and afterward, this kid can't even get in a Juco, they can't get in a community college, they, and they've already, the time has already passed for them to get into a, a program like Scarlet Oaks or something like that, so they're just kind of out there afterward, you know.
In addition to that, Dr. Johnson, no matter what, what the community thinks, no matter what the NACR say, people in this community value education, no matter what people think.
Absolutely.
And I can tell you, based on my own personal experience, not one parent complained about the 2.5.
No.
Not one parent knocked on my door saying that that's too much of a stretch for our students to get there. And I, and I have to also add that many of our students have exceeded the 2.5, that was just the standard.
That's exactly right.
And so they've exceeded the 2.5, and so if you set it, they'll reach it.
And that's what we have found across the board with all of our athletes, many of them are at 3.0, because the minimum is the 2.5.
Exactly.
You see what I'm saying? So we're pushing them. 2.5 might not be a lot for some people, but for some people, 2.5, and it is a C average, you know, in the middle, not the bottom, so it is, it was a good thing that we did that, and it helped our students tremendously. We didn't have any district honors tonight, but we do recognize that we have many mentors and volunteers and stakeholders that work tirelessly with our district, volunteer with different organizations throughout the school, and we want to thank all of you for doing what we do, what you do. Also, Mr. McGowan's pointed out the thank you to the teachers and the administrators, and we can never, they are the front line, so we do always want to say thank you to them as well.
Doc, before we close, there, there's two other pieces from the, these are, these are made up jobs, these were not on any schedules, and people don't get any additional compensation for them, and I think I've mentioned them at several meetings, the COVID tracers that we have, where Ms. Wilson tracks the adults, and Ms. Bray tracks the students, and Ms. Bray wants to make an announcement quickly about the next opportunity.
Absolutely.
Just standing here.
Yes.
We have a fifth vaccination clinic on November 5th, which is a Friday, for all students, staff, and community members, and so this clinic will give, again, all of our stakeholders and community members a first shot, a second shot, and/or the third booster shot that everyone is anticipating. So keep in mind, it's one or the other, you can't get all three shots at the same time, one shot at a time. But again, we are having that third booster shot that everyone is anticipating, and that's on November 5th.
To let you know, the booster is, the, the, the vaccine is doing what it's supposed to do. Ms. Wilson, how many adults do we have on quarantine?
Well, not very many, still, and I'm sorry, I didn't even answer that, but last year this time, I was panicking, and the year before, you know, I was panicking. This year, maybe one here or there, and, and usually it's from some outside exposure. This is the staff, not the kids. It's usually from some outside exposure, and maybe a spouse hasn't, but most of our staff, I think over 90% of our staff, has had at least two, two shots, and then hopefully after the fifth, we'll all have our booster shots, so.
So I'm excited. I read your, I read your report. I read your report, and there's one person on, on quarantine.
Not as of last week.
As of last week, yes.
Also, to make note to that, because that was one of the things that I was going to bring up about the Friday, November the 5th, the time is from 2:00 to 4:00, is that right, Mrs. Bray?
Yes.
Okay.
And sometimes they go over, just depending on the demand and how many vaccinations or vaccines they have available, so it could be just depending on how many people we get.
And this is a wonderful partnership that we have with Mercy Health. I'll mention that, and to thank.
Mrs. Bray, Mrs. Bray organized the booster in September for November, so we were well ahead of everyone, and the November 5th, we don't want you to think that you'll have to run into little kids and have to teach them along the way, that's a no-school day for students.
Right.
So feel free to come.
Right. Yeah, I.
They accept walk-ins, however, we have a point, of course, that for the folks that are organizing and facilitating it, but walk-ins are available, and you can fill out the forms here, also on site.
Very convenient.
Very good.
Do you want to, do you want to share with the public your statistics that you always quote about 100% of the people on ventilators?
Yes. So, 100% of the people that are on ventilators through two major hospitals, one Johns Hopkins and the Cleveland Clinic, actually, it's 99.7% of those people have not received a vaccine, the people that are on ventilators. 99.7%.
Thank you. The other, I just had a couple other things that I wanted to mention, the Fine Arts Department, the Music Department, it has a concert coming up in the month of November, so we want to support that, the orchestra concert and the a cappella and jazz concert. Also, we have, Mr. Smith mentioned earlier, November the 12th, I think, is great, coming out, the great card distribution.
October 29th.
Is that when it is? Is it the 12th?
October 29th.
October the 29th.
So you just gave some kid a pass, saying that mine didn't come yet.
That's right. You just said not November the 3rd, like, if they don't get them by that time, okay.
You said October 29th.
I did, October the 29th, I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention that.
It was like.
Also, there's a, there's a fall play coming up, November the 18th, 19th, and the 20th, and I personally can't wait to see the fall play in our new auditorium. That's got to be exciting, the acoustics, the sound, it's going to be exciting, so come out and support our Fine Arts, our, our students and their leaders, they work tirelessly after school with the props and everything, so it's, it's an exciting time for them. Also, the election is coming up, November the 2nd, so go out and vote, there is an operating levy on the ballot, just keep in mind, it's a renewal, right? It's a new one, it's a new one. Okay, it's a new one. Okay, so come out and, and vote and support that, your district needs it. If not, then Mr. Seymour will have to, or Mr. Smith will have to do what they do to make things work, but.
Costs the average homeowner $100,000 valuation of property, $16 a month.
Okay, thank you, that's important to know. $16 more a month. And what I can say is that with the bond levy, you can see where your money went. What I can say that this, this board and this treasurer and superintendent tend to follow through on what they say they're going to do with the money that we get, so that's all I've got. The next item on the agenda is 1501, which is to move into executive session, and there's not a need for an executive session tonight. So, having said that, we're at 16.01, and if all minds are clear, we want to thank Tony and the Waycross Community Crew for videotaping tonight's meeting, and I'll call the Witten Woods City School Board of Education, regular meeting for Monday, October the 25th adjourned. Thank you, take care of yourself and your loved ones, stay safe, healthy, and well.